First item on the agenda, we are honored to have a visit from Representative Claire Cronin and Senator Walter Timmeltie. Representative Cronin, do you want to come in?
Sure.
Thank you.
So nice to be here tonight, to see you all. But it's also a bittersweet occasion. And so Jane Martin, would you come over here, please? Jane?
Thank you.
On behalf of the House of Representatives, we wanted to offer you this citation, which I will read for you. And it's be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Jane Martin in recognition of your dedication and commitment to the community through your tenure on the Easton School Committee and your continued volunteerism with the Easton Public Schools. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. And it is offered by me, your State Representative, and Speaker of the House, Robert DeLeo. And thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jane has been...
One of the things that I have to say, and I'm going to say it because I can see three former school committee members sitting in the audience tonight. We're really fortunate in Easton that we've always had a school committee that understands the big picture, knows how to make good decisions on behalf of the students, and really tries its best to push the district forward. So while I really appreciate this, and I'm very surprised and honored, I couldn't have done anything that I've done without the colleagues I work with now and the colleagues who I've been really blessed to work with in the past. So that's it.
So we're also doing, by my colleague Senator Walter Timmeltie, who has something from the Senate as well.
Okay. Can we all say "you" today tonight? In all seriousness, and thank you very much, Representative Cronin. The finest thing that we have in our communities, and certainly most importantly in our public schools, school committees make that happen. And for years, I've heard about the great quality schools we have in Easton from Representative Cronin, long before I had the privilege of representing this community. And since I've had the privilege of representing this community, I've always heard from Representative Cronin what great work the school committee does and what great work you do, Jane. So it was my privilege this week to offer the citation in the State Senate honoring you for your great work on the Easton School Committee and the great work for the Easton Public Schools, a marquee school system. And we also know this is not an ending for you. There will be other great works you'll do for this great community. The citation states, Commonwealth Massachusetts State Senate official citation, be known that the Massachusetts State Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Jane Martin in recognition of your dedication and commitment to the community in the town of Easton through your tenure on the Easton School Committee and your continued volunteerism with the Easton Public Schools. And be further known that the Massachusetts State Senate extends its best wishes, Jane, for continued success, because as I said a little too early, this is not an ending. That the citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to in a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate. It has been signed by the Senate President, Karen Spilka, attested to by Michael Burley, and offered by myself, Walter Timmeltie. Congratulations, Jane.
Caroline?
Okay. So I'm responsible for this, I have to say, because it's the least literally that we could do. I'm going to miss you so much. But I'm also going to read to you what I actually sent to Faith Simon, who's Claire's very competent aide. And she told me, you know, it would have to boil down to two sentences. So I started out with two footages, I ended up with one with good print. I have to read. Jane Martin's contributions to the Easton Public Schools and to the community of Easton have spanned a period of nearly 20 years, at least. That's just what I know about. Early on, she regularly volunteered in the schools of the district. She eventually took on increasingly larger roles, bringing significant benefits to the entire district. She was actively involved in both the 2002 and 2004 campaigns to pass debt exclusion overrides to fund the middle school. She was in expansion of Oliver Ames High School and Easton Middle School, actually assuming leadership of the second campaign. She has served on the Easton School Committee for over eight years, 2013, and again from September 2013 through the present. During her first two terms, Ms. Martin was either Vice Chair or Chair of the Committee for four years. Since June of 2017, as Chair of the School Planning Committee for the proposed early elementary school project, Ms. Martin has worked tirelessly to guide the Committee through the complex procedures required by the Massachusetts School Building Authority, meeting with state officials, working closely with the project manager and design firm, and keeping other members of the Committee and the public fully informed each step of the way. Ms. Martin has continually provided strong support for programs to address the academic, co-curricular, social, and emotional needs of students in the Easton Public Schools. An individual of remarkable intellect and creativity, she possesses an in-depth understanding of educational trends, budget development, and policy formulation. Jane Martin has earned the respect and admiration not only of her colleagues on the School Committee and district administrators, faculty, and staff, but also with parents, town officials, and countless others in the community. So a couple of additional comments about Jane. Jane is a person who really works very quietly but diligently behind the scenes. She never grabs the spotlight. She's always modest about her contributions. She just waves off any attempt to bring attention to her really very significant work on behalf of the schools. Most people have no idea how much Jane does. I mean, I would say that it's been practically a full-time job past year between school planning and school committee. For the school committee, she's become effectively our in-house professional development chair. She scours the educational landscape for information about new initiatives in other districts, not only within the state, but across the country and worldwide. Admittedly, many of the highly effective practices she identifies are out of reach for our budgetarily challenged district. So it's a bit of a tease sometimes when she brings these wonderful ideas to us. But the information she provides sparks new ideas, and speaking for myself, helps keep the focus on the importance of remaining open to constructive change and to striving for continuous improvement. So Jane, I'm just going to miss you very, very much. And I mean, I know that you're going to continue to be involved.
I'm not going in, right.
Which is great. Kind of, you know, eases the pain a bit. But thank you so much, Representative Cronin and Senator Timmeltie, for coming tonight. Because I think it was really important that people be aware of how much Jane means to all of us and how much she has contributed to our district.
Thank you.
Okay. Time for a meeting.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Again, I'm really overwhelmed. I didn't expect this. I'm sad to be leaving the Committee, but I also feel like sometimes new voices and new perspectives are really, really critically important. I'm confident that the new member on the School Committee, because this is an uncontested election, so I think the results are pretty well-known, is going to be a really strong contributor. And I'm looking forward to watching what happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Can we clap for Jane?
Yes.
Okay. Onto some more mundane subjects. Minutes. Okay. First set of minutes are from Thursday, March 28, 2019. Does anyone have any comments or questions? All right. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of Thursday, March 28, 2019. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. The next set of minutes are the executive session minutes from Thursday, March 7, 2019. You can't discuss them in public since they are executive session, but does anyone want them held to discuss later in executive session? Nope? All right. So I'll make a motion to approve but not release the minutes of Thursday, March 7, 2019. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay. Our resign payments. So the next item on the agenda is discussion impossible vote on turf replacement recommendation. Mrs. Pruitt?
Tonight, we have our Director of Operations, David Twombly, here, along with our Athletic Director, Bill Matthews, and representatives from Activitas, Jonathan Chartwick and Patrick McBreyer, to present some of our questions that we had at our last meeting.
Yeah, so basically, what we, this is kind of an extension of our last meeting from last week. So there were several different questions that came up from last meeting, working with Bill and closely with John from Activitas, and all those questions. And we made a PowerPoint presentation, which John will go over. In addition, Bill and I will kind of comment where it...
Yeah, just to go to the first slide. I just want to start off by clearing up a little bit of some questions before from last week, just about who we are. There was maybe some confusion as to whether or not we work directly for a turf company or do that. We don't. We're landscape architects and civil engineers. Our specialization is outdoor sports. So you can see from the slide here, we do everything from master planning, natural grass fields, running tracks, tennis courts, traditional landscape architecture, residential design, and civil engineering. So we're not people who do synthetic turf fields only. We don't work with the synthetic turf companies. We don't take money from them. We don't do anything. We represent only our clients. Our clients are municipalities like Easton, public schools throughout the Commonwealth. We also work for colleges and universities throughout the Commonwealth and across the country like Harvard and MIT and Boston College, and also professional sports franchises like Patriots and the Revolution. So if that clears up any confusion that people in the community might have, that we're here selling synthetic turf, that's not the case. We're here to represent what makes the most sense for you as a community when you're trying to renovate this facility. Okay?
Thank you, Pat. So following our meeting last week, we were tasked with a number of questions as it relates to alternative infill, specifically organics. And then since that meeting, we were also asked to provide some additional information on the design process. So first, we'll start with the design process, kind of where we started and how we got to tonight's meeting. Then we'll try to address each of the individual questions as it relates to organic infills, question by question. So the first two questions, we want to discuss, there's a question of who did on the turf subcommittee, and how, why, and when was Activitas chosen? So I want to let Bill Matthews speak to those two questions.
Can we get the lights on the screen a little bit?
Is that easy to do?
Yeah.
You know, next week.
Hi, I'm Bill Matthews. I'm the Athletic Director for the Oliver Ames High School. The subcommittee that has been working on this project for some time now includes the twelfth... Billy Casey, who is our informant for building the grounds, is the person that actually does all the maintenance on our turf field and all of the fields here at Oliver Ames High School. And then myself and Fred Murray, who heads the Friends of Easton, which is the fundraising group that's helping us to fund the overall project. In terms of how and when Activitas was chosen for the project, the first thing I did is I reached out to a number of various schools, because we've got turf fields all around us, and a number of them have been put in recently. I reached out to them and asked for some references. Please tell us some people that you've worked with, that you know, and tell us what you thought of the work that they did. And we ended up with three names. We brought all three of those companies in, including Activitas for an interview. It was Dave Field at DBW, David Twombly, and myself that interviewed these firms and representatives from the firms. We were extremely impressed with Activitas for their professionalism, integrity, and their extensive experience and knowledge in managing turf projects. They knew the industry and had what we felt was a much deeper knowledge than the other firms that were out there that had been recommended. So we felt very confident that these guys can help guide us professionally through this project and have the knowledge to do it with integrity and to do it correctly. So any questions you might have for me relative to this process?
Why don't we, we'll hold the questions till the end?
Okay.
All right. So I'll piggyback on what Dave, I'm sorry, what Bill has mentioned. So late December 2017, we had interviewed with the subcommittee. And then at the beginning of 2018, we had interviewed with the school committee, and we were selected to work on this project with the folks. At the end of February, we had our kickoff meeting with the subcommittee. And then there was also a few coaches and other people from the high school that attended the meeting to try and give some feedback. The first thing we did was went through a programming meeting, so really getting a understanding from the subcommittee on the existing turf field and the existing track facility, what works about it, what doesn't work about it, what games are played on there, how's it used in the summer, does the band use the facility? Getting as much information as we could from the users on how the facility runs, and then what are the deficiencies, what are things we could add? You know, one of the things we talked about last week, ball netting, it was a concern at the edlines. So we discussed the fact that there's a temporary system. We want to get sometimes a little more permits, so how we incorporate that into the project. And then prior to that meeting, we had also engaged Sports Lab USA, their third-party testing agency, to do performance tests on the field. So a few things they did, they checked the range of the field, so we wanted to make sure the turf field and the base don't underneath were draining appropriately. Because obviously, if there was drainage issues, that's something we would want to address as part of this project. They also looked at the infill that was in the existing field. Again, does it drain appropriately? What's the particle size of the infill? And what is the efficacy of that infill to be reused in a new system if that was the direction the subcommittee and town eventually wanted to go through? And fortunately, all the test results came back good, that the field drains terrifically and the infill is appropriate for a new system that's around where you go. So during that kickoff meeting, the other thing we reviewed was a turf education process. So what that is, was Pat and myself coming and explaining what's in the market right now, the different turf products, going over the different fibers, the backing, all of the different alternative infills that are available, so crumb rubber, organics, TP, EPDM, all the different infills we talked about the last week. Talked about resilient underlayment pads that can be installed underneath the turf field that add additional safety and protection to your athletes. I'll discuss that a little bit further down the presentation. And then talked a little bit about the project itself, how you remove the carpet, how you remove the infill, what you do to prepare the base for a new synthetic turf system. So all that was in the initial programming and kickoff meeting. During that meeting, we did talk extensively about infills, you know, talked about the results of infill you have in your field now, along with what are the other infills, what are the pros and cons to each of those, because they all have different pros and cons, whether it be premium costs, maintenance, or other issues that we've seen on other fields that have been installed. So that was really the first initial conversation we had about the infills that educated the subcommittee as we moved forward through the project. So following that kickoff meeting, we had started schematic design, where we compiled all the information that we were presented by the town and the users at that meeting, and started developing schematic design to understand what the scope of work was going to be. And generally, it's been the same throughout the project, resurfacing the turf, resurfacing the existing track, and then embalming at the edlines. And at that point, we also started preparing cost estimates to understand what the different costs would be for all the components. And we also looked at the alternative infills, what those premium costs were, in addition to the inclusion of a resilient underlayment pad underneath that synthetic turf system. At that point, we started digesting the costs. I think Bill went back, started looking budget-wise to see how we could make the funding work, because there was different funding sources that would have to be used in order to facilitate this project. So we presented the schematic design at the end of March of 2018. At that point, about a month later, we had four turf vendors come in to give their own presentations. The companies presented were Shaw Sports, SprintTurf, FieldTurf, and AstroTurf. Those are four of about six or seven companies in this area that generally can meet the performance specifications that we develop. As Pat mentioned, you know, when we're preparing specifications for our clients, it's a performance-based specification, which basically says you need to provide a turf system that equals all of these components, whether it be qualification-based, or we have to make sure we have enough experience for that install, to put them in. So we don't have a turf company that just started up last week and is buying carpet down the street and thinks they can put the carpet in. We want to make sure that reputable companies have done this over a period of time. And we also brought in companies that have used all types of infills. So again, you know, getting their information on their systems, their experience with infills, and any information they could provide to the subcommittee. One of the important questions we asked was, for a field that has football, soccer, lacrosse, field hockey, and much more use, what are the appropriate systems to look at? And generally, what they recommended was a dual-fiber system with or without a pad, and you could certainly use sand and rubber as being the most cost-effective solution based on the available use of the existing infill that's there. So piggybacking on the recommendations that they had, we started to formulate what we think the proposed synthetic turf system should be. Following that, on June 5, myself, Billy Casey, and Bill Matthews had made trips to about four or five different facilities around this area, to walk in those fields, get a sense of how they feel, how they look, and just what they look like in the ground rather than looking at just the fields in pictures paper. They all had different lengths of installation, a few had just been installed the last few years. We also walked Lea College, which has been in the ground for about five or six years, to also see how the fields wear and tear over time. Because, you know, as you know, anything you buy at first looks great, but you know, down the line through the warranty, is it going to hold up? So we were able to get a sense on how these fields look from day one on through the warranty. So based on the information from the kickoff meeting, the schematic design, the turf vendor presentations, and the visits, the subcommittee had given us direction to proceed with the following scope of work. Dual-fiber system with sand and rubber infill that we would use the existing infill and supplement as necessary. It would be installed over a resilient underlayment pad that goes between the stone drainage base and the carpet on top. And then resurfacing of the track, and then ball netting is an alternative to the bid. From that direction, on June 5, through the last several months, we've started to develop the drawings to be prepared for putting them out for bidding. And we've also been assisting Bill with CPC applications, some information he needs for funding, and any other information that he needs to get out to questions from the community. September 28 was the meeting that we attended for the school committee, which we updated the school committee on the project, talked a little bit about infills at that point as well. And then also, Bill had shared kind of some of the funding sources and how we were going to get this project to move forward. At the time, the school committee said we were in a good place to proceed, to start developing a little further, going, getting CPC applications, starting to look at schedules to hopefully bid it out sometime this spring. As I know, the CPC meeting was February 7, of which I attended with Bill Matthews, answered a few questions that the group had, and I believe funding is in place from CPC to be provided at town meeting. And then since then, again, we have been developing the drawings a little further so that we hopefully can go out to bid soon. Met with the school committee last week, and then we're here tonight to answer any further questions related to design and organic infills. Want to touch on some of the rationale for the choices made by the subcommittee for the synthetic turf systems. So, sorry, one second. So one of the things off the bat was the turf system. How did we get to this dual-fiber system? So to just explain slightly what that means, on the far right, there's two pictures of synthetic turf fibers. The top one is a monofilament, the bottom one is a slipfil. The difference in those two, the monofilament is a spined fiber, so it's one single strand. And then the slipfil on the bottom is cut into individual strands, one piece of fiber is sliced into multiple strands, where you pull them out, kind of looks like an onion bag. Each of them have a little different characteristics for athletics. The monofilament tends to stand up more, so if you have a field for soccer or multipurpose field that you're going to play field hockey on, that's an ideal fiber because it's going to slow the ball down. The slipfil fiber tends to lay over a little more, which gives the ball a little more speed to the ball, so the monofilament is beneficial to control that. But the slipfil does a much better job locking in the sand and rubber, so we don't have fly out of the infill when the players are running or sliding. So what the turf companies have done is taken the two of those fibers, combined them into one to give better ball resistance for certain sports, keep the infill locked in, and it's more aesthetically pleasing as you have some strands that are straining the ground, and over time, those slipfil fibers will lay over. So based on our conversations with turf vendors, they thought for a multipurpose facility, that was an ideal system for fibers. And so the resilient underlayment was then the next decision point that was made by the subcommittee. You know, we talked a lot about the science behind potential concerns with rubber. There's a lot of science to athletics and concussions. And the resilient underlayment is something that certainly reacts to those items. There are statistics that one of five concussions caused for athletics is the impact that a player makes when they hit the surface, not necessarily the initial impact. So what happens is, if you're in a soccer game, two athletes are running for the ball together, they hit each other's heads, they don't have the control after that initial hit to brace themselves for the ground. So what happens is that resilient underlayment that's underneath that turf surface gives more impact attenuation and safety for when that player falls to the ground. There's particular tests that are done to check what the performance standards are for synthetic turf fields in relation to natural grass, because those are the standards we're trying to meet. HIC is one of them. It's a human, I'm sorry, head injury criteria, which essentially, it's an anvil that is raised above the ground and dropped from a certain height, and with a numerical factor, it's figuring out what the critical fall height is if that one step anvil hits the ground. So essentially, trying to mimic a four-foot, five-foot, six-foot tall individual athlete when they are impacted, fall to the ground, because that's going to protect them from concussions. GMAT is another thing that's been used by the turf industry for years in a way of checking this impact. That's only from about two feet above grade, and it's a flat-headed missile, so when it hits, it's really testing the resiliency for when your body hits the ground. The anvil for the HIC test is more, is a rounded anvil, so it's mimicking the actual head, and it's usually coming in at about 1.4 to 1.5 meters above grade. So it's mimicking, you know, if I were to fall, hit myself on the ground versus, you know, when you're dropping a bullet from two feet, you're really not mimicking the impact your head can make for the surface. So that is an additional cost and premium to the synthetic turf system we're talking about. This subcommittee felt very strongly that the resilient underlayment should be part of this scope of work. And that was, you know, once the results of the crumb rubber showed that we could reuse and there's the science back that there aren't any other concerns, you know, the premium for that pad was something they felt strongly should be part of this project. The next, the next thing obviously was maintenance. Probably about 10, 15 years ago, when these turf fields started going in the ground, they were saying, put the field in, eight years from now, no talks, if no maintenance required. And that's just not the case. Any synthetic turf field does require maintenance. Each of them have a little more maintenance, a little less, depending on what the system is, specifically related to infills. So one of the things we were tasked with was, we need a safe surface that also needs to have minimal maintenance, because there's only so many maintenance hours and money available for all the fields and land in the town. So therefore, you know, we need to maintain this appropriately, but we need to be as cost-effective with our maintenance as possible. We touched on slightly, the track is in need of a resurfacing, so we also had to make sure we had costs in there for that resurfacing. With the track itself, it gets to a point that it's not resurfaced every eight to 10 years or so. There's a potential that one day it falls off and you're replacing the entire surface. We're right at that point where we think we can resurface, which is a lot more cost-effective effort than if we had to replace the whole system. So that was clearly something that needed to be included in the scope of work. So based on all of those factors, along with cost, because ultimately, you know, the factors of safety, performance, maintenance, everything rolled in, and then looking at the most cost-effective solution, knowing that there's a budget for every project, and we need to make sure that this project fits into a reasonable budget that the town can afford. I think one of the last questions related to the design process is, what happens if the synthetic turf field doesn't happen this summer? You know, where we stand with the field as it is right now... Any synthetic turf field does require maintenance. Each of them have a little more maintenance, a little less, depending on what the system is, specifically related to infills. So one of the things we were tasked with was, we need a safe surface that also needs to have minimal maintenance, because there's only so many maintenance hours and money available for all the fields and land in town. So therefore, you know, we need to maintain this appropriately, but we need to be as cost-effective with our maintenance as possible. We touched on slightly, the track is in need of a resurfacing, so we also had to make sure we had costs in there for that resurfacing. With the track itself, it gets to a point that it's not resurfaced every eight to 10 years or so, there's a potential that one day it falls off and you're replacing the entire surface. We're right at that point where we think we can resurface, which is a lot more cost-effective effort than if we had to replace the whole system. So that was clearly something that needed to be included in the scope of work. So based on all of those factors, along with cost, because ultimately, you know, the factors of safety, performance, maintenance, everything rolled in, and then looking at the most cost-effective solution, knowing that there's a budget for every project, and we need to make sure that this project fits into a reasonable budget that the town can afford. I think one of the last questions related to the design process is, what happens if the synthetic turf field doesn't happen this summer? You know, where we stand with the field as it is right now, and what's the future? It's hard to tell the future, however, as we talked about last week, the field has reached its useful life. If a resurfacing doesn't happen this summer, we would suspect that some aggressive maintenance would be required, potentially adding additional infill, which could be a challenge, because over time, those fibers degrade, so they're much shorter than they were when it was initially installed. So the lack of fiber doesn't allow the infill to be locked in place as well as it should have been from day one. So that, that becomes a challenge, where we want more infill, yet it's going to be hard to keep that locked in place. And then I think from the school side, you know, they would look at doing some testing, you know, seeing how it is performing, you know, potentially with the GMAC and the HIC that I spoke about a little bit. Seeing what those results are and determining if it's still a safe surface, if we have to wait. If it's not a safe surface, looking to see what other available playing space either on campus or elsewhere is available, whether that be other town facilities, other towns, Stone Hill, or what have you. Bill, do you want to touch on that any further?
No, I think you got it.
So that sums up generally the design process to date. The next portion of this presentation is to directly answer all the questions we had as it relates to organic infills. So just for anyone that wasn't here last week, or a reminder from what we talked about last week, on the top right, those are the two different fibers we're looking at. On the far left, this is the turf system profile. So you have the synthetic turf fibers, you have the carpet backing that the fibers are attached to, the infill in the middle, and then the resilient underlayment pad below And I've already touched a little bit on some of the testing. Obviously, the testing I spoke about, we're trying to mimic natural grass characteristics when we're looking at the synthetic turf fields. So with the pad, we generally look, not necessarily at the initial install, but about five years down the road, how are these fields going to perform? There's three comparisons we have here, and I'm sorry, the print's a little small, but you know, what's a natural grass field going to perform at? What's a synthetic turf field going to perform at without a pad five years after installation? What's a synthetic turf field with a pad, how that's going to install in five years? Generally, what we found through testing is, a synthetic turf field with a pad will perform like natural grass field would, and have good resiliency. The numbers for synthetic turf field without a pad, the field is firmer, harder, and potentially not as safe on down the road. Now, that being said, there is nothing unsafe with a synthetic turf field without a pad, it's just an extra precaution as we've gone through the science over concussions. It's a real good benefit to include in your project. Actually, we'll skip to, these are all the questions separately, but we re-arranged them the next one, so I'll just move on to it. So the first question was cost. What are the capital costs of the product, of the organic infills in addition to the sand and rubber? So we talked a little bit about products last week. There's generally two products that we would specify for this project. One is greenplay, and one is geofill. The greenplay, greenplay organic infill can be installed by most of the turf vendors. A geofill is proprietary to a certain turf vendor, Shaw Sports, so if they did an organic, they would use that product. The other ones would generally use the greenplay. Both of them are a combination of cork and coconut husk. I know the geofill is about 90% coconut to 10% cork, and the percentages are a little different for greenplay, but they're fairly similar. And then they're fairly similar products. Cost. So as part of the premium, we're not looking at just what the additional cost is for the organic, so some other things we would have to consider. The first thing is, if we were not to reuse the existing infill in the field, we need to do something with it. We need to remove it, and either dispose of it, or recycle it elsewhere. So those costs are about $25,000 in addition to the initial project. With the organic infills, we talked a little bit about the need for irrigation. So these organic infills need to hold a certain moisture content, they're about 30% is the content we're looking for, and we know especially in this area of the world, you know, we're going to get droughts during the winter, or during the summer. So to assure that we keep that moisture content in there, irrigation is something that most of the vendors will recommend. Based on providing a connection of water to the track from the snack shack, water into the field, a quick coupler to make that connection, some pavement repairs, and also a traveler irrigation system that you would have to purchase, that's about a $30,000 effort there. And then the premiums for the two different infills are slightly different. A dollar, six cents per square foot for greenplay, and about a dollar twenty-four square foot for the geofill. So when you add all those costs in, the greenplay, which is the less expensive organic, is around $137,000, and the geofill would be around $151,000. So if we were to look at an organic infill, your premium is around $137,000 to $151,000. For the maintenance requirements, that's a key component as it relates to organics. Organics do have much more maintenance involved than sand and rubber. Sand and rubber, you're going to groom the field maybe every four to six weeks, or so you want to fluff up the infill, make sure it's not overcompacted, then pick up any bug pins here, lags, things like that that get embedded into the infill. With the organic infills, there is a little more maintenance involved. One of the first things off the bat is, about every two to three years, you need a top dress with new infill. Because this is a natural organic material, it does break down over time, so you will lose potentially about quarter inch of height to this infill, so you'll be bringing in about quarter of an inch every two to three years. And over the lifespan of the eight-year warranty, we figure that's about three times you're going to top dress that. In addition to that, you're going to want to decompact prior to top dressing, so that's not overcompacting, you're putting a softer lift on top. That dollar amount depends on what the infill is, ranges from about $30,000 to $60,000 over the life of the warranty, or about $10,000 to $20,000 per occurrence for top dressing. As it relates to decompaction, they also require decompaction every year. So you're going to decompact when you do the top dressing award, and then later you're going to decompact. So that's either a $5,000 effort, which is generally about $40,000 over the eight-year period, or probably about 12 to 16 hours of your own maintenance, if you have the equipment. It's not something that you would necessarily have to source out, but it's man-hours you'd have to find per year for that maintenance. And as we've talked about a little bit with the organic, oh, I'm sorry, with the irrigation is, depending on the time of year, what the weather conditions are, there's a potential of irrigating the field once or twice a year. Oh, I'm sorry, once or twice a week. So that, it is an automatic system that you plug in, and generally, traveler system, you set it up on one side of the field, there's a reel that'll bring the irrigation to the other end of the field. Takes quite a bit of time, but it's a system that someone can set up, go do something else, and they can leave it in place while it's happening, but there is setup and breakdown, so there's certainly maintenance required, manpower to get the system working, and then to store it, bring it to the site, depending on where it is. Not necessarily a main, well, I would consider maintenance issue. One of the other things along with the organic infills, with the moisture that's in there, the end of your fall season, the beginning of your spring season, because the moisture is in this organic, it does, it will have the ability to freeze. So you may be in a situation where we get a cold November, we do have a frozen field, and either you get rain on top that could create some drainage issues, or you have the football team that's going to be having their last game on Thanksgiving, and now you have a frozen field. And then you have to look at either ways to relocate, or somehow try thaw that field out, if you're not waiting for the sun to do that. So that is a concern that we've run into on some of the fields we have done. And then obviously, in the spring seasons, when lacrosse and other teams want to get out there, we want to make sure that that organic does have time to get sun-to impacted and thaw before you let your players play. Because if you did some of that HIC or GMAC testing on the field during those times of year with this organic, you will see elevated rates that may warrant you not having any use of the field. So, as it relates to maintenance costs over the eight-year period, with all the top dressing and the other maintenance required, the range around $70,000 to $100,000 in maintenance over that eight years. So we look at the initial costs of around $137,000 to $151,000, but we also have to look, there's annually and over the life of the warranty, additional costs that need to be captured and found somewhere in the budget. Question number three that was asked, does the organic infill break down? I know it does, and top dressing is required every two to three years. Where are these organic infills sourced? So greenplay is sourced from India, and geofill has sources from India and Sri Lanka. What are the irrigation requirements for the organic infills? So we've touched on this lately, but let me read specifically some of the language that I pulled together. The water requirements for the organic infill are directly related to the amount, or amount and frequency of rainfall and relative humidity. The moisture content for both organic infills shall be maintained between 30 and 40%. If the organic infill drops below these levels, 3,000 to 6,000 gallons of water shall be applied to the organic infill. So, you know, one of the things we want to make sure, when you get to that rate, we want to make sure it's getting fully irrigated. And if it gets to a point that needs that irrigation, it's going to be quite an effort. And like anything, we don't want to just irrigate it all at once and try to get all that moisture in, we want to make sure we're maintaining it properly over time. During periods of drought or dry weather, the field may require additional irrigation over a few times a week. If proper moisture content is not maintained, the system can become dusty, more splash infill flyouts, a little bit what I talked about where the infill flies out from the fibers and doesn't lock in place, and it's not as safe a product, but it does do that flyout. And the infill is more susceptible to breakdown as well during those dry periods. Moisture content should be measured using a meter, so that's something during dry events or even during weekly maintenance, you may want to have someone come out there and do a number of spots again to get a sense of where that moisture level is, so you know if it's getting to the point that we need to irrigate, or that we're in good shape based on weather conditions we're having. And again, you know, just typical monitoring of that field. Is there any available testing of the organic infill? The answer is yes. Geofill has been tested. Greenplay may have been tested, but the results I received were from geofill. Results provided conclude that hazardous metals, as well as volatile and semi-volatile organic chemicals that are present and or extracted from geofill, were found not to be present, were at levels below maximum regulatory limits. We were asked what companies we have worked with. So for the organic infills, we've done a few fields with geofill, which is a vendor for Shaw Sports, and then Infill Pro Geo Plus. They're a vendor we haven't used in quite some time, but we've used in the past. We have not used greenplay or Brockfill, two companies that we, the greenplay that we're talking about tonight, and Brockfill we mentioned last week. Brockfill has just gotten on the market, they don't have a field in the ground right now. So we would be very hesitant to have you as our client be the first guinea pig to use that infill and see how it works, because there's just no history. And I think that's one of the things we look at, qualifications for the whole turf system, is making sure these things have been in the ground, have been used, and there's a good history, because we don't want to be in a situation where we use something for the first time, it fails, and then it's not a good situation for anyone. What public or private school districts has actively worked with to install organic infills? There's a few in Commonwealth. Simmons College, there's two athletic fields at Daley Field in Boston that we installed organic infills a few years ago. That same summer, Bratton School in Bratton, Mass. has a field that's organic. The Shady Hills School, a field in Cambridge, we put down a number of years ago, about 10. And then Rollins College down Winter Park, Florida, was installed a few years ago. As it relates to all of those facilities, they're all privately maintained. Simmons College is a DCR property, but they have a 25-year lease and do all the maintenance out there. So all the facilities we've worked on with organic infills are privately maintained and in private facilities. Is there any feedback from any other school districts related to the organics? I know, Bill, you had spoken to the athletic director in Andover, and if you want to share some of your comments.
I had a discussion with Bill Martin, who's a former athletic director, the chair of high schools at Andover, and has been a great couple of years. So they have one of these skills up there, it was installed before you became the athletic director. It's a nice surface to play on. You did this game when you get down towards the cork and coconut flows away, so you're raking off the side of the field. And other than that, really not a lot, not a lot of feedback. It certainly is a nice field. It's just a matter of what, you know, what the right field is for your particular situation.
And then the last question was the process used for selecting chrome rubber. I think I touched on this already, but again, you know, first and foremost, I think, safety and the potential health concerns we looked at from day one. And once it was decided that the chrome rubber from science looked at no elevated risks of health concerns, and it was adequate to be reused, we then went to the next step to look at the other components that we could include in the project. And like I said, I've spoken a lot about the resilient pad this evening. I think that's an important element that's been added to these projects. Again, you know, that there's plain science that talks about concussions and the safety of these athletic fields, and that will certainly help with some of those concerns for your athletes. Last piece of this presentation is the cost estimate. So this is very similar to what we shared last week. So the subtotal for the mobilization, site preparation, the drainage testing, the synthetic turf system, track resurfacing, and ball netting is around $752,000. That's with bonds, overhead profit, and general conditions for contractors. Of that $752,000, $73,000 is allocated to the resilient pad that I've spoken about. We also have, right now, just under $60,000 in contingency, which we're hoping will be, hoping by the time we get the design completely finished. There's not many unknowns on this project. It is not going to look pretty straightforward as a scope is related. You know, the only thing we could find is when we remove the carpet. You know, if we're seeing something with the stone base that we just can't see when we're on the field right now. Or a certain pocket that doesn't drain like the other drainage testing came in. But we're hopeful we won't necessarily need to use much of any of that contingency. So the opinion of probable project cost for the whole project is $812,317. If we were to look at greenplay and geofill as additional items, that would bring the totals from $812,000 to $949,000 and $963,000 respectively.
Thank you.
Sure.
So the subcommittee members ask some questions, and then we'll open it up to the public. Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. All right, thank you very much for your presentation. All right, so I have some questions, but I'll see if other committee members will have questions that they want to ask. Okay. So we've talked about the studies with chrome rubber, and people have expressed concerns about that. Do you know of any concerns with either the cork matter, or the coconut core, or the silica sand that's used in the organic? Have you heard any concerns about that? Or are there any long-term studies on the matters?
No long-term studies. It's still a relatively new product.
Sure.
Four or five years of more significant commercial use here in the United States.
Okay.
It originated in Italy, so if we all went to Italy, we could find fields that are a little bit older.
Yeah.
But there's not a lot of long-term study.
Okay.
And so, can I just follow up? So just because there are no long-term studies, though, doesn't automatically assume that when there are long-term studies that they won't find anything. I guess, you know, there's a lot of information right now that's available on the chrome rubber, a lot. And there's very, when, I know we've all looked, I couldn't find those kinds of comparable studies on the PBI. And so I just wondered, is it because they just haven't had time to do them, because no one's asked to have them done?
Probably no one's asked to have them done.
Okay.
They're not certified organic, though. They're just considered organic because of the materials.
Right. Yep. I think that's actually a pretty meaningless term, because I've actually read several articles that said there's no certification by either the USDA or any third party that it's actually organic. So it's kind of so-called organic.
I'm made out of carbon.
So, Mr. Matthews, I have a couple of questions for you. So as the athletic budget stands now, do you think you'd be able to cover the cost of maintenance for a turf field using the organic infill, assuming there will be no no additional funds from the school operating budget?
No.
Okay. And you discussed a little bit how to determine when the field is no longer safe to use. Do you have, I know it's an estimate, do you have a timetable on when that would be?
We would do that probably in June to try to determine what the status of the field was. It doesn't, it doesn't become unplayable overnight.
Okay.
But we would have to evaluate as how close we are at that point in time. And it's impossible to determine exactly. Typically, I think there are parts of the field that become harder than other parts of the field.
Okay.
You get more mechanical wear on those areas. So, we'd have to determine the safety of the field, whether or not we could do any kind of remedy to try to fix it up and keep it going for possibly another year.
Okay.
But it's just, I don't have the kind of insight, and I'm not really sure anybody does, to know for sure exactly where that stands. I know that based on industry standards and expected life of the field, I think our field stood up really well. I think our PPW has done a phenomenal job of maintaining that turf field. You know, it's just, we just know it's coming to the end, but I can't tell you exactly when.
Sure.
So, we, you know, the plan was if we can get things in place, this certainly seems to be optimal. I mean, I think one of the things that is somewhat overlooked is the track situation.
Yeah, I was going to ask you about that.
And when I was on the track yesterday, I was looking at it, and I said to myself, "We're really getting close here."
Sure.
It's not a safety issue. It's an issue of the adherence of the latex that the renewal process is to put more latex on top of the existing track. And that cost is about $135,000. If we don't do it in time, then the latex will not adhere to the existing surface, and then the whole thing has to be torn up and replaced at an estimated cost of about three times the $135,000.
Okay.
I know you've probably answered this 10 times already. I just don't remember. When we resurface the track, what will that get us for expected life of the track? Will it be comparable to what we're going to see in terms of now a new life on the turf? Is it another 10 years we'll get?
Maybe make it a little more understandable. So, there's lifts of rubber and latex that go on the bottom to build up. And then, when you reach the top, that the red surface they put on it, that has UV inhibitors in it. The bottom layers have no UV inhibitors in it. So, if you have that red wear out, what gets underneath deteriorates.
I see.
So, which is why John had said it falls off the cliff. It's fine, it's fine, it's fine.
Yeah.
All of a sudden, there's no UV inhibitors, the whole thing breaks down and falls apart.
Sure.
So, by putting the new red stuff on top of it, you push out the life of that field quite a bit.
Okay.
Oh, the life of that track.
And so, Mr. Matthews, say we didn't do anything with the field. Once it was deemed to be unsafe, it would just be closed, correct? And so, at that point, what would happen to the games and practices that would normally be on that field?
We would try to accommodate practices on our own facility, although we're overcrowded in the fall as it is. I don't have enough space for the existing teams that do practice on our facilities, including Parkview. We would just have to look at, you know, whether or not quiche fields would be an alternative. Bus kids over there, there would be an additional expense for that. And then, when it comes to events, we would just have to go sport by sport to see which events we might be able to host on grass fields and which events we would have to move. Like, we don't have a football field, so we would have to go somewhere else for football.
Okay.
Some of the other sports, we may be able to play on grass.
Okay.
Sports like field hockey, it's a completely different sport. So, when you have a competitive varsity team trying to compete on grass that is used to playing on turf, it's a completely different game. So, that's a difficult challenge, not impossible, but certainly changes the game significantly.
And if we did have to go to other towns, would there be... Do towns charge you to come and use their fields for either practices or games that you're not scheduled to be at?
Typically, no, because if someone asks us to use ours, we're not going to charge them.
Okay.
It's just one of those relationship things where, you know, we're going to return a favor, hoping that someday when we need it, they'll return that a favor. So, I don't think that there would be a charge for it. The bigger challenge would be availability, because most of them, most of them are booked solid on their turf fields, likely are.
What about busing to the, to the practices?
Right, so we would have to, if we were using off-site facilities, we're going to have to get buses for it, so there would be an expensive bulk of that.
Okay. So, as we all have, I've read a bunch of the studies. I did call some schools that have used the organic infill. Some of them didn't get back to me. One of them that did is the Groton School, which is a private school in Groton. I talked to the director of building and grounds. He's happy with the field. He said they went from a grass field to turf with the organic infill. So, he couldn't give me any comparative maintenance costs. He said that he did buy extra infill when the field was installed two to three years ago, and that they've just about gone through that extra infill, so they're going to have to purchase some more. He said in the cold temperature, the water tends to pool and freeze, which I think you've talked about. And then, he said during heavy rain, the infill will float to the surface and it needs to be redistributed. So, he said they had to buy a special piece of equipment to do that, and then he hired the company that installed it to do that work. I also spoke with the COO of the Fesidin School, which is a private school in Newton. Again, they went from a grass field to a turf with organic infill. He said freezing isn't an issue for them because they don't use their field in cold temperatures. He said they do have to keep it at the right moisture level or it breaks down. He said a couple of years ago, when it was particularly dry, they had to pay $80,000 to top off the field. So, what they did is they bought a self-walking water cannon to use now. But he said if he had to do it again, he would definitely put in an irrigation system. Excuse me. He says it needs to be groomed every two weeks, and twice a year, they hire a company to come in to do a deep grooming. And although, he also got some extra infill when the field was put in. He hasn't gone through it yet, but he says he expects he will need to top off a few bags each year. The only public school I was able to get in touch with is Winthrop High School. Talked to the athletic director there. Again, they started with a grass field and then went to a turf with organic infill. So, he couldn't give me any maintenance comparison either. He said, again, that he was given some extra infill when the field was installed. They've had the field about a year and a half, and they haven't quite gone through it yet. He said they hired somebody part-time to maintain the field. So, I just, I just thought those were additional pieces of information that would be interesting.
Thanks for calling.
So, I mean, I have more to say, but if anyone has any more questions, I'd like to give you all opportunity.
So, I'll say a couple of things. First of all, I read an article that was just published March 30th this year from the Loudoun County Public Schools. It was a full analysis in Virginia of, basically, the title of the analysis was "Problems With Alternative Infills." And it actually talked about several other kinds of alternative infills, like the encapsulated rubber, the, I think they were thermoplastic elastomer. But they spent a lot of time talking about corconut.
The things we're learning.
Oh, yes. Yes. I did not ever think at this point in my life I would be obsessed with chrome rubber. But anyway, it actually, I'll read a couple of quotes from this article. "Corconut turns to dust, and it also blows away and floats readily during storm events, fouling waterways with suspended solids, TSS, I honestly don't even know what that is, and nutrients, plus any binders, adhesives, biocides, and antifungals used on the field." And then, it says, "So-called organic corconut is not certified by USDA." We've talked about that before. And there's no third-party certification at all. And it's, basically, this article says it's completely unregulated, essentially. So, you don't have any agency or overs, you know, kind of formal oversight. It also said that, well, this was actually something I'm quite confused about. It talked about the silica sand that is used with the chrome rubber. But in this article, it seemed to be saying that it's also used with the so-called organic infill. And in fact, what this article said, but I was confused because you didn't mention the sand when you were talking about the so-called organic infill. So, and you notice I am using the term "so-called" because I am not certified. That it seemed to indicate the actual percentage of silica sand with the plant-based infill was, was quite a bit higher than it is for the chrome rubber infill. And silica sand is actually, the American Academy of Pediatrics, for example, says that it cannot be used for sandboxes because it is potentially quite dangerous for young children. So, and as I said, the silica sand percentage for corconut fields can actually be as high as 90%. Now, the Greenplay, it's 60%. But that's quite a bit higher than the 48% for chrome rubber. So, I was actually as alarmed about the holes, and there's a lot about silica sand, most of which would make people quite uncomfortable. So, I just feel like that, for me, was a very important piece of information, because I had not been aware of this, you know, kind of the balance of the silica sand. And also, because of the fact that the so-called organic fields can blow away more easily, you do have potential greater exposure anyway. So, then there was quite a bit of discussion about fibers that could get into the lungs because there's this dust that comes from the corconut. So, I, I mean, I feel like we'd really be taking a flyer, this is my opinion, obviously, if we went with the so-called organic. I didn't start out feeling that way. I think I've scanned about 40 articles now, and I would feel very uncomfortable with what is essentially an unproven, basically untested. I know they did some chemical tests on this, in this one instance, but I'm not really talking about that. I'm talking about the longer-term usage. I mean, we don't really have, it doesn't seem to me, a lot of corconut infill turf fields where they've been around for 10 or 20 years and, you know, that we have the kind of information we'd like to have in terms of the risks to children. So, I've read nothing that indicates that a chrome rubber infill is less safe or less toxic than organic. And I've kind of seen so-called organic, and I've kind of seen articles that indicated the potential for much, for less safety and more toxicity in the plant-based. I don't know if that will turn out to be true. I mean, 20 years from now, we could be given a whole new set of data based on a longer-term assessment of this product. But I actually ended up being very concerned about something that I thought sounded like a great idea to start with, so. So, my only, I'm going to try and be very brief, is that, first of all, I appreciate the fact that you have stepped back and brought us all, kind of walked us through the process from the very beginning, because I think that a lot of the concern we had last week from the community perspective was because there was this sense that people didn't know how we got to where we got. So, I appreciate you taking the time this evening to kind of walk us all through. You know, like, similar to, and I know Nancy, it's similar to, I've read a lot, but I'm not a scientist. I am not, I'm not a scientist, so I have to be honest. When I'm, when I'm skimming through articles, I'm kind of just picking what seems to be important facts. But what's really important to me is we had put a subcommittee together, which included expertise, and, and you clearly have experience with a variety of different turfs. You clearly have used those different products in different locations, depending on what's needed. Your recommendation for our situation has been for the chrome rubber. I feel like unless there was some really strong compelling evidence, whether it be around safety, whether it be around the fact that there was some cost considerations that might make PBI more appealing to us, that you would maybe step in and say, "Wait a minute. I don't get any of those things. I don't feel like your due diligence, I don't feel like the due diligence wasn't done. I feel like you've made a recommendation that at this point, I'm very comfortable with." That's where I am.
Any other comments? All right, so before I go over how we make this decision, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Please state your name.
Yes, Kyla Bennett. I'm sorry I didn't make last week's meeting, I was traveling, but I did watch a on-look catch. And I am a patient scientist. I do this for them. And I frankly am a little bit stunned at misstatements that were made by the toxicologist last week. And, you know, people willing to accept this risk. And specifically, the toxicologist who is here said there is, there is a huge body of evidence showing that chrome rubber is safe. That's not true. There is an absence of proof that chrome rubber causes cancer or these diseases. It is very, very difficult to prove that. It's not just with chrome rubber, it's anything. We look at Roundup, which the town of Easton until now was using. And just now, they're saying, "Yeah, it does cause cancer." We've known it for years, but it's very difficult to prove. So, I thought that was, for her to phrase it like that, to say there's a huge body of evidence saying it's safe, that is not true. And I, and as a scientist, I want to share that with you.
Sure.
That is simply not true. The absence of a proof of harm is not the same thing as saying that something is safe. And there were a ton of other things she said that were wrong, that staph bacteria don't survive on chrome rubber. Absolutely not true. There's a 2018 article in a peer-reviewed medical journal, not something she just pulled, a peer-reviewed medical journal, that said that the abrasion type of injuries that you get on artificial turf give you MRSA. It just came out recently. It's there. There's evidence there.
Is that for, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, is that for any kind of infill or specifically to chrome rubber?
That's for the actual, the artificial grasses.
For the artificial grass, okay.
So, she said it doesn't survive. It does survive on rubber and grass. She said there were a few carcinogens, but at extremely low concentrations. Carcinogens can act at extremely low concentrations, particularly for people who are immunocompromised, children, people with cancer, people with AIDS, people with any immune deficiency disorders, sometimes in the perquadruple. Okay? So, just because they're low concentrations doesn't mean it's safe.
What about her, I'm sorry to interrupt you guys, she said something about it being, and I don't really understand, bioavailable? Does that have to do with what you're talking about, too?
That's a different, a separate.
That's different, okay.
She said that there, there were so few carcinogens. A recent study, 2019, this year, again, in a peer-reviewed journal, said, "In new chrome rubber, researchers identified 52 chemicals that were classified by EPA." We're talking about this EPA under this administration. That were 52 chemicals classified as known, presumed, or suspected carcinogens. 52. And then, there were hundreds that didn't have any, any data at all. So, you know, one of the other things that somebody said is certain towns are risk averse. My strong belief is that Easton should be a risk averse town. There's something that scientists talk about called precautionary principle. If you're not sure, err on the side of safety. We're talking about our children, and not just our children, but the rest of the community. Because another study that the toxicologist neglected to mention was that, it doesn't matter because kids will play and play games on turf. This affects the whole community. A 2018 study showed that infill particles were found in 85.4% of downstream sediment samples, as far away as 4.3 kilometers. These little pieces of rubber are not only becoming airborne, they are getting into the water supply up to 4.3 kilometers away. That doesn't just affect the people. I don't have to do this anymore. My kids went kindergarten through 12th grade, they were on those fields. I don't have a opponent in that ballgame, but I am concerned as a resident of this town who drinks this water. And then, you know, Jane, you said that you thought that there was so much research done on this. There has been a lot of research done on this, and the problem is that they're finding things of concern. So, in February of 2019, the Agency for Toxic Substances and Diseases Registry, the ATDS Darth Hour, this is the agency who said with PFAS that let's hide this report because it's going to be public relations nightmare. Let's not let people know that PFAS causes cancer. This agency, just a few weeks ago, said, did some preliminary results from a pilot-scale study, and it indicates the need for further investigation for a select group of chemicals for which field users may be exposed. This was two weeks ago, okay? My company petitioned EPA to remove their approval of chrome rubber, and in 2013, they did. In 2015, the Consumer Product Safety Commission removed their approval, just because we haven't proved the link between this stuff... Just because we haven't proved the link between this stuff and cancer does not mean it's safe. And the last thing I'm going to say, because I know I've gone on a long time, is that there was just an article that came out. There are crumb rubber nanoparticles in this crumb stuff. Nanoparticles. Makes up more than 30 percent of car tires. That's a lot of nanoparticles. They just discovered, and this was just published in the issue of Current Biology. This is a medical journal. These nanoparticles behave just like asbestos. And they're saying this is going to be the next asbestos problem. We are going to see athletes who are breathing this stuff in and getting very ill. I understand we need fields for the kids to play in. I understand that there's money problems, but honestly, the safety of the people in this town needs to come first.
But do you think that these, these materials that are labeled organic are safe? We just, we don't know anything about those either, and there's a particle issue with some of those as well.
I don't know enough about those. I also am concerned about the sand, or the sands in the rubber infill as well. Sand, so that kind of sand is not good to breathe. I don't know enough about that to say, to say what the answer is, but what I'm saying is, is there not anything we can do to explore this further? Both that, EPA is supposed to be coming out with their study this year, which, I mean, I don't know if I will trust it, but it's been going on for years now, so hopefully we can. And I, I just feel like we're making a mistake.
So here's a question, is who's doing the studies on the PBIs? Where are those studies? I couldn't, I looked and could not find any scientific studies.
So I saw the MSDS, the Material Safety Data Sheet, or the, what's the name of that company? Green Play, is that what it's called? Green Play? And there was nothing in it. They, no, I meant, there was nothing, there were no red flags, there was nothing in there. But they haven't done, as you can see from the crumb rubber, which has been around for decades, they still haven't done those studies. They still have not done determinative studies after decades, so expecting those studies to be around after five years is.
No, and that's, I think that's, that's a fair point. I think my concern with choosing one over the other is, I can't say this other infill in the long run is going to be any safer because we don't know. We just don't know.
It's cork and coconut, which the guy, Green Play, Dominic, that I talked to, said that it was organic. So is it? I don't know. It's not approved by USDA. I mean, a lot of things aren't approved by USDA, and people call them organic. You could probably figure out if you sourced it. If I had to choose over crumb rubber infill, which has 50 known or suspected carcinogens as registered with EPA, versus hopefully organic cork and coconut husk, I would absolutely 100 percent go with the cork and coconut husk. Absolutely.
Ms. Belli?
I always think this third option is probably the most least popular here, but in all due respect, Donna Belli and I was on the finance committee, actually, when this turf was first brought in over grass, and then I was on the school committee as well. And back at that time, it was absolutely not going to be approved unless the fundraising happened, and the fundraising was supposed to cover the original turf, the maintenance, and the replacement. So I'm a little boggled of why our tech pay dollars would be spent on this at all. And not only that, at the time, there was controversial issue with the red trap, because the cost ended up coming in lower than the original estimate. Instead of saving that money for the maintenance, which were the safest, instead, they spent the money on the red trap, which was not what was in the original proposal. So, and I hear everything you're saying, Carla, and it raises concerns for sure, but I am concerned that there's no history on this new stuff. The third option is go back to grass.
I agree.
You know? I mean, this is crazy to be spending, what did we have? One, is there 200,000 dollars more, which I can't imagine, just safety? We don't know enough. But a project of $813,000 that the town was never supposed to cover.
So here's a.
And I know it's not to go over, it'll be like a lead, but that's my.
But here's another question, and maybe it's, I think to assume that there's no risks associated with grass is perhaps not, there are different kinds of risks.
There's risks of it all.
Right, exactly. There's risks of, and I'm, I'm going to look at, because we have a physician in the room, I don't know if Lori knows, but I would, I don't know if grass, or you might know, has a higher risk of, does it have a higher risk of concussion rates?
When it's not maintained, I think we saw the pictures of what the old field looked like.
Yeah.
And it wasn't good.
Okay. So I, so again, I do think that, I think with all of the alternatives.
Questions versus the cancer. But. I'm sorry, could I just ask a question? My understanding was to go back to grass would actually be more expensive, and that we'd only be able to use the field one-third of the time that we currently use it. Is that correct?
Pull out all the stones that's underneath, and then we install new, you have to import soil and.
So in terms of the money argument, it, it doesn't work with, I mean, I'm not saying I'm.
But it's one and done. It was the safety.
Uh, yeah, to a degree, that's true, but, but, you know, in terms of the financial, I mean, what we're facing in terms, yeah, right now, the short-term cost financially, yeah.
Do you have a picture of the field before?
Oh, I remember.
Well, it was like, it's not, it was a grass field, because with the, with the amount of pressure on it.
I think if there is a, it probably gets us quite clear than I can, but if you put a natural grass field there.
Yeah.
You're still going to have pesticides and fertilizer, which I know carcinogens is slated back here. Just mentioned about, rump was just found to have been a carcinogen. So if you put fertilizer and pesticides out there, I mean, that's not a good thing either, so. Kind of like pick your poison. I mean, I don't really know which way to go. I mean, you can, you can make pros and cons, but each one of the different.
Well, and I think that's what we've asked this group to do. We've asked them to look at pros and cons. Right?
Right. And just to return to the article that I referenced earlier, the Loudoun County Public Schools analysis, the sort of white paper that they put out, but they talked about corconut. First of all, it says that cork actually is one of those hardwoods that can pose significant risks, respiratory problem risks specifically. It can cause hypersensitivity pneumonia, which is alveolitis, I guess is the term. And frequent attacks of this can cause lung scarring, fibrosis. This is specific to certain kinds of hardwoods, including cork. I mean, cork and coconut sound so natural, but I, I just, everything I read seemed to indicate that there were a lot of unknowns, mostly unknowns, about, you know, the long-term impact of using that in so many ways, including any kind of future exposure. But, I mean, my main concern is, I think the jury's still out on the new stuff. It's kind of still out on crumb rubber, but it ha, you know, we, as you pointed out, we don't use the old generation crumb rubber, which seemed to be more problematic in terms of the particle size, correct? I hope I'm, I got that right. But I just feel like we would be, in some respects, kind of saying that we were willing to take a greater risk on an unknown quantity than a mild risk, or whatever, on a known quantity. I mean, we just, there's probably nothing that's perfect, including, from what I understand, a lot of natural grass fields are full of lead, from many, many years of automobile, you know, the gasoline, leaded gasoline, kind of permeating the air and getting into the dirt. So I, I mean, there's kind of nothing safe, and we certainly don't want our kids to stop playing, so I don't know what this, I have the utmost respect for Kyla Bennett's expertise and her credentials, and I know that her passion is there, and I am so pleased that she cares for this community so much, but I just, I'm just not seeing it. I'm not seeing that the risk of crumb rubber is, you know, with evidence, unsafe compared to corconut. I'm not sure either is 100 percent safe. Nothing is.
Have any other comments? You can think about it while I just go through. So how does the school committee fit into this decision? We don't have authority over the day-to-day operations of the school, but we are responsible to keep the public informed, which we've done over the past year with our meetings. We are responsible for the budget, which is why we voted on funding sources, as, as was mentioned. A portion of this project will be put in our capital budget request, which will be voted on a town meeting. A portion was requested to use CPA funding, which, again, will be voted on a town meeting. And we have some private fundraising that's going on, and then some money from the athletic revolving account. We have said all along that none of the funds would come from the school's operating budget, and that's the way it has to be. But we have been asked to make a recommendation on whether to proceed with the projects. My understanding would be the next step is if, would you go out to bid, and they'd have to have, this is what the project scope is, to go out to bid. Excuse me. So any other questions or comments about that?
From a, from a, from a funding perspective, too, I think the thing to think about, and I'm just thinking, I'm making a comparison to the MSBA, just because I've been dealing with the MSBA so much, is one of the things, if we were not to do this this year hypothetically, and move it forward because we felt like we needed more time, or there was going to be more information, my concern becomes, the pool of things that is going to be on the list next year could look very different than the pool of needs that's on the list this year. And so this year, based on what our needs were, and based on what the town needs were, there was capacity to, to put this on town warrant to bond. I don't know that we could guarantee that next year we'd be in a similar situation. You know, again, I'm thinking of depending on what ends up happening with the school project. You could end up replacing a boiler next year, that may have to go on. There may be huge roof issues, that may have to go on. We may have, you know, I mean, we've been fairly fortunate, I'm using that term really loosely, so far in terms of those primary schools, as we've discovered issues with tiles and asbestos, and what we need to do that to, to remedy those, remediate those situations. But that could, where we've been fairly, very fortunate in little pieces, could become a very big problem.
That will happen quick.
And that will happen quick. And that's a huge amount of money. I just, I'm thinking about what the pool is like this year, what it could like, look like next year, so.
So are you saying that we would really just make a recommendation in what way could, well, first of all, I'd love to hear from both Nancy and Michelle what you think. I mean, I talk way too much myself, so.
Like, I didn't read as many articles as Caroline did, but.
Nobody did.
And I think I know more about crumb rubber than I ever thought I would know, we've all said that, so. I, I don't know, I think this activist group, is that, did I say it right?
Yep.
Has done a really nice job of informing us, and that the subcommittee here has really, you know, put a lot of time and effort into this. And we've had this field for nine, eight, 10, 10 years. And I don't know, it seems to be great to me. So I'm, I'm on the crumb rubber, go with it, and that's where I'm at, and I understand. But anything in life, I mean, there's risk, like eating bacon, or coffee, or, you know, there's, everything's got a risk. So I, I just feel like for the past 10 years, we've done really well with these fields.
I want to thank you guys for, I want to echo Jane, there was a big piece that I was missing, was that the process and how you got there. I just felt like it was here, and I was missing that, and that really cleared me up for tonight. I want to thank Kyla, and we received a lot of emails from concerned citizens, and I appreciate each and every one of them, and each and every question and point that was brought up. And honestly, I'm, depends on the minute, I'm back and forth, I'm seeing both points, but I also know it's, there's a lot of monetary issues that go in with if we change. And I think that it would be a real disservice to our students if we start sending them off to other fields and other venues, so. I honestly don't know at this point, but I do appreciate both points of views, and I am listening to both.
I think we both are listening, we're all listening to both, yes.
But I want the people who aren't here that have been writing to us to know that I read every one of them, I just clicked on every link.
Yeah. And it is, it's hard. You read one thing, and you think one thing, and then you read something else. It's, especially when, you know, we're not scientists, and so we are just trying to adjust what the experts are telling us. I don't think we need to vote on this, since, again, we don't have day-to-day oversight, but I think we just need to come to a consensus about, to give.
To move forward.
Direction. Do we have a consensus to move forward with the project as recommended?
I think so.
Want to say?
Yes.
Want to say? Okay.
Which, so what it means is we're, I think we're giving them the authority to move forward and go out to bid.
Yes, to go out to bid, and then obviously, the next step for the town is, you know, these, these two funding sources will be up for vote at town meeting. And so I just think it might be important to be able to present the people at town meeting all the information as well, so they can make informed decisions. Thank you very much. Oh, Dr. Han?
Lauren Han, I have a question. Do you have a timeline? No one's talked, I was wondering, if this starts in June, when is it done, and how does weather play in that, and. I'm trying to figure it out.
So we would probably go out to bid over the next week or so. It would be about three-week bid process, so the goal is to have hard bid numbers from contractors, so we can present the little bid at town meetings, we're not confusing them. And I think the schedule, it's probably about eight weeks yet for the whole production process. So we would start shortly after the end of school, which is, I believe, June 23rd, or something around there. And I think we're looking to be done by August 15th or so, which would be right in time for fall.
Is that secure or anything, or is it going to go?
No, I mean, you know, weather will impact the infilling, so when the sand rubber go into the field, because the field can't be wet, because that infill needs to migrate down. And then for the track surfacing, they need some dry weather, so there could be a little bit of impact related to that. But what, you know, once all the surfaces are put down, there's not necessarily a period to allow people to go, except for the track surfacing, you know, the day they paint the lawns, paint it on, you know, for a few hours, things like that. But there's certainly weather impacts that could delay, so that's why we want to hit the ground right as soon as the season's over, or, you know, get out there a little bit earlier to do some of the demo work, anything we can do to pick up, because we know there will be some rain in the summer at some point.
So we'd have to start with the private funding, right? Because one of the funds available fiscal year, I know that's not the only person, but.
Right, but, but I think, you know, obviously, all the funding needs to be in place, so we'll have the funding, we'll have the CP.
But it's still need the funding since, like, the town money wouldn't be available until July, right, the new fiscal year?
Um, in the new fiscal year to bond it, do you mean to, to bond it out when they'll bond it out? Yeah, probably. But I don't know if there's something that, that Connor can do to make those funds available once we vote for them at town meeting. So, yeah.
Temporarily, you know, pay, like, I don't think municipalities can pay contractors upfront until the work is all completed, that's what you pay. So even though the fiscal year starts July 1st, we're not allowed to pay until the project pretty much ends, which is like August 15th.
And I'm just going to confirm, because we are looking at a timeline, and so the, the private fundraising will have to be pretty well done by the time this, this work is hitting the ground, and that's, you're on, you feel like you're on track for that right now?
Absolutely. We're on track. I also just feel the need to at least tell you, and I think we've talked about it in the past, Friends of Easton raised $500,000 10 years ago. Six years ago, Friends of Easton donated the turf to the town. At that time, there were questions, some confusion regarding somehow that Friends of Easton made a commitment to raise funds in perpetuity. People should understand that Friends of Easton, for the last eight years, has been me and a checkbook. And the notion that the individual would somehow commit to raise $800,000 every 10 years for the town when their kids are 27 and 29 years old, is not, only not plausible, but was something that was spoken about on the record in the school committee meetings six years ago.
Right.
So the good news is, people, I think, in the town are very supportive. We've got sponsorships from people with regard to signs on the perimeter fencing, with regard to press box, significant donations and sponsorships, and so at this point, we're well within reach of the goal that we expect to achieve, and we don't see any reason that we're, we're not going to get there.
And so I'm going to just, so that we can be really clear, and we've, we've said this in school committee meetings, is first of all, we appreciate that you have continued this in school committee meetings, is first of all, we appreciate that you have continued to step up to the plate and fundraise, and, and kind of maintain your commitment to this as you the one guy with the checkbook. I am going to go back to what Donna Belli talked about, and what Caroline and I have some pretty direct experience with, as well as probably Lori and Colleen Lessis. Originally, Fred, when the Friends of Easton was just formed, and it wasn't just one guy with a checkbook, there were conversations and commitments made, and, and I'm...
And I don't think Fred was there.
You probably weren't even involved.
I think you're probably talking about John Hallow.
Right, thank you. I don't even think you were involved.
John took a job in Washington, too.
Absolutely. And you were left with the, you were left with the, exactly. And so I, I think I need to be clear that, that there was some history, but we're not, you know...
No, I, look, I, I understand it, but, you know, we donated the field six years ago and had that discussion.
Yep, absolutely.
And I remain committed, and I've told you why, and I don't need to repeat that, it's personal for me. But, you know, as I said, I think there's great people in this town, amazing people that step up and are willing to help us with kids that are, that are long gone. The utilization that the, the field provides, Bill and all the teams that he's trying to support is, is crucial, and, and we're going to get the money, there's no question.
Great, thank you.
And I, I mean, I think we all so appreciate your involvement, and recognize that you were not responsible for the sort of misunderstanding on the part of the committee.
Sure, no problem.
You know, so.
Well, and I, I, we've had that experience on more than one occasion, where, where really well-intentioned people will step up to volunteer to fundraise and support something for a period of time, but then, after a period of time, there, those people are gone, and new people haven't stepped in, and those commitments end up being assumed in our operating budget.
Which we cannot do. Keep saying that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Thanks for coming. Okay, next item on the agenda, public hearing on school choice. Okay, and then we will have a discussion of possible vote on school choice. So, school choice. Do you want to just describe a little bit what it is?
Sure.
All right.
School choice is an option that each district needs to pursue each year to, each district needs to vote on each year to see if they will allow students from another district into their district at no cost to the, well, there is a...
No cost to the housing district.
Correct.
Right.
It is something that the school committee needs to vote on each year. It's up to the school committee, it's the sole discretion of the school committee, whether or not they would like to allow school choice. School choice can be a district option, it could also be a grade level option, and can also be limited to a particular number as well.
Yeah, this is interesting. So if more students apply, then there are slots, a lottery can be used. If you allow school choice one year, you're not obligated for subsequent years. However, once a child is admitted to a district through school choice, that child may remain there through high school. District is not responsible for transportation, and the rate is capped at $5,000 for the receiving There are several districts that do participate, there are several districts that do not. Easton has not participated in the past. I don't know if anyone has any comments on whether or not they think we should participate?
Well, I've, I've never supported it, but mostly because we, we really don't have, certainly in our elementary schools, we don't have room. But, and we have very large class sizes at this point in the high school, luckily we're bringing them down a bit in the middle school, but we, it's not like we have a lot of spare space. And, right now, with our own budget situation so precarious, and the fact that you actually bring in far less per-choice student than the per-pupil amount for the students who are already here, it just doesn't make sense, either financially or in terms of space to me, and it continues to be that case for me, so.
Yeah, I don't think the circumstances have changed from last year to this year, or from the year before, or the year before, or the year before. I think the circumstances have, have remained the same, so I can't see any reason why we would vote, vote to become a school choice district.
Well, this is a public hearing, so if, does anyone in the public have an opinion on this, or a question about this? Okay, no, no one has raised their hand. So, I will make a motion that the Eastern Public Schools will not participate in school choice for the 2019-20 school year. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Next item on the agenda, item number seven, which is discussion and possible vote regarding foreign exchange students. I'm going to make a motion to table this item. Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor? Next item, schedule of the school committee meetings for 2019 and 20, second reading. Mrs. Pruitt?
So, before you, you have the schedule of school committee meetings. There are, there, you'll see some options in red in December, where you will need to choose from one of these dates for a meeting. There's also some time changes at the bottom. Typically, we meet one Thursday evening a month at 6:30, however, those two options are at 6 o'clock. The other, we also meet one Friday a month, and those times vary, whether it's 9:15 in the morning, or 3:00 PM in the afternoon.
So the first ones, we need to, we need to choose one from the December dates, is that right?
Yes.
I would like to suggest December 5th. I know I have a commitment on December 12th. I mean, it could be December 11th also, but I'm thinking in terms of Thursdays, December 5th.
Are any of these days concert dates from the schools?
I don't think that has been set yet. Check the calendar.
And plus, we can't always avoid every school activity for our meetings, I mean, it's just impossible. And, you know, sometimes, occasionally, a school committee member misses a meeting, or sometimes in this, an event. The fifth, the only issue I see with the fifth is that then is, is over a month before our next meeting. And in my experience, things always crop up in between, but...
Oh, you mean between the 5th and January 9th?
January 9th, yeah, so it's, it's actually a pretty long time between, but, but I, I mean, I don't really...
That's right, because we only have one meeting in December, right?
Right, so I don't otherwise have any objections, but, I mean, I, I wouldn't mind the 11th, but...
Did we want to add in a Friday meeting in December?
Are you suggesting in lieu of the...
No, no, but I mean, we could, December 5th or 11th, if I...
So it would have to be the 5th, it would have to be the 13th, because the 20th, that's really the start of winter break.
So it'd have to be on the 13th.
So Friday, the 13th.
Well, could we go with the 5th, since Nancy said she is, she has a commitment on the 12th?
A commitment on the 12th.
And then, you know, we can, as we get closer, we can know whether we need to try to schedule a Friday. And we can schedule it in December, right? I mean, we can just do it then.
Sure. Does that work for everybody?
Sure.
I don't know why I'm looking at you.
Doesn't matter.
I know, Jane, what do you want to do?
Jen!
All right, so, all right, so we'll do the December 5th for that. And then did you, was there a question about the times in May and June?
No, those are just highlighted because those are time changes.
Right, because those are the school presentations.
And isn't there usually an October meeting where we start early, because it's the, it's not really school committee, but it's the professional status?
Professional status, that would be October 3rd.
Yeah, it's not actually the meeting that starts.
I know, but...
Yeah, but you're right, yeah.
That's right.
So should it be listed at 6:00?
No.
No, leave it at 6:30?
Yeah, leave it there.
But then there's like an agenda, yeah, yeah.
You'll get notification, probably be at 5:30.
Public comment? Anyone? Assistant superintendent notes?
Sure, I have three things I just want to highlight.
Well, this is, I'm sorry, this is the second reading of the school committee.
Oh, so you voted, I'm sorry, you are right.
I'm sorry, you didn't interrupt me.
Go back, I'm going to, somebody wanted to make a motion to accept our school committee meeting schedule?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? There you go, thank you, Caroline. Assistant superintendent notes?
Sure. So, we had, this past Sunday, we had 14 girls from Oliver Ames attend the Girls' STEM Summit at Wentworth Institute of Technology. This event was held this past Sunday, like I just said, March 31st. The purpose of the event was to inspire girls to pursue STEM fields. You can see a picture of the girls on my Twitter feed, which is @AssistantsupEaston. It was so wonderful that they were able to attend. Mary Romans, our math department chair, attended the event with, with our students, so it was absolutely wonderful. There was also the 84 Movement at the State House yesterday. So in collaboration with the Easton Wings of Hope, students from Oliver Ames were at the State House, working on raising awareness of the importance of preventing tobacco use among teens. Students received leadership development training on meeting with public officials, as well as had face-to-face meetings with state representatives and senators. And Senator Timmeltie actually just commented on it this evening, when I spoke with him before the meeting, and how wonderful the Oliver Ames students were, and how attentive they were to all the topics as well. And we have many wonderful arts nights happening around the district over the next month, so keep your eye open for them. Tonight was EMS, and I'm very sorry that I wasn't able to attend the Easton Middle School art event. So that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. School committee notes?
I just want to give folks a heads-up reminder, I know we all have the invitation for senior projects, which is this Sunday. And I, I just want to comment real quickly, and to thank, I think it's Craig Goldberg, who is the, I know it's Craig who teaches that class. I had the pleasure this week, first I went to Jonathan Tolleb's concert, Jonathan composed an original piece of music, and actually put together a program where other students composed music, and then he also put together an orchestra, and they played his original piece. And then yesterday, I just went to another presentation from another one of the seniors, her name is Kayla Brawley, and she actually has been working all this year with a music professor from the University of Arizona. And she had put together two proposed high school courses. She researched the curriculum, she looked at how she would, you know, put the courses together. They were very interdisciplinary. She talked about how she would appeal to students, you know, from science and math and the music. One was a music engineering course, one was a hip-hop course. And those were just two little samples of the great work that that senior project is. I really, there's a huge part of me that wishes every single senior in our high school could have that opportunity, because I actually think, particularly when you're a senior, as you're checking out, this is something that really has clearly kept those kids engaged. So, if there was ever any way we could, could...
Expand.
Expand that. And, you know, I, I do know that we offer community service right now, and a lot of our students take advantage of community service. I think in some ways, the senior project I see is, is a much more valuable learning opportunity for our kids, so.
So I'm just, I was just going to say, I'm wondering, maybe we could have our students teach some of these courses, save us a lot of money, and, you know, they, I mean, I don't know how the union would feel about that, but since we can't afford to hire new teachers that could create these wonderful, or, you know, could, could teach these wonderful courses, I mean, this isn't as crazy as it sounds. I actually remember many years ago, a wonderful elementary teacher, Ginny Elson, let my daughter come in and for a whole semester teach environmental science in her class. That was her project, her independent study project, and she developed a whole curriculum, and she taught it every week, once a week, for, I think, the whole year, actually. And she loved it, the kids loved it, Ginny Elson loved it, I mean, it was, it was just a, you know, it's not that crazy to think that we have so many talented and brilliant high school students. If they could kind of share their creativity and ideas with other students, it's not that wild an idea, especially for a budgetarily challenged district.
I think you'll see with the change in frameworks for the social studies standards, there is a service project oriented, they're very service project oriented, especially at the high school, and it, they are looking to make a project mandate for the high school students.
That's right.
So I think you're on to something.
A project, I mean, I think Jane's talking about...
Yes.
A project that would be like, but, but I'm not necessarily thinking it should always be a service project.
Service.
I mean, community service, of course, is something that's important, we want to encourage it, but I wouldn't want to see it limited to that, because what Craig Goldberg does with these other projects, they're not per, some of them are effectively community service of sorts, but many of them aren't, but they're still tremendously enriching and, you know...
Well, my point was, I saw two, they were wonderful. I'm sure that the rest, if we go on Sunday, will be just as, you know, they were just really good.
Any other comments?
I just want to congratulate Jane from me, my partner over here. And we'll miss you, and I've been on both, you know, when I was on the teacher's side, and then here, you've been a very good influence on the school committee. So, we're going to miss you. But we're not going to miss you, because we're going to see you.
Right.
Okay. And we're going to welcome Jen with open arms.
Cut the election first.
Come on, be positive.
Jane, you want to close us out?
Can I just, should I just say one last thing? I'm sorry. On behalf of Dr. Cabral and myself, I meant to say this in the assistant superintendent notes, but overlooked it, I apologize, but it has been such an honor, sitting next to you, my, my partner, my, my neighbor, sharing notes, passing notes. But also, my experience with you, Jane, over the past couple of years, is you have been a true champion for all children, and you will be greatly missed, and I really thank you for your leadership, your mentorship, and it has been an honor to work with you. So thank you.
Thanks, thank you very much. This was really wonderful, and I, I so appreciate everything that everybody said, but really, let's be honest, we could do the same thing for everybody who has often sat at this table, so I, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, you're pretty special.
I'd say so, yes, definitely.
Make a motion to...
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor? Nobody raise their hands?
Thank you.
Thank you tonight.
Thank you.